Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, February 23rd. The time is 6:30 PM and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. You will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roger, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Kuzumano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido is absent. Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Jollet?
Here.
Clerk Posey is absent. Supervisor Viviano?
Here. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Mr. Carter, members, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Yes, we do have the proposed removal of item number 10, which is the request to approve update to the five-year financial projection in one-year rate design for Macomb Township Water and Sewer Department with Utility Financial Solutions.
And that's to be tabled to the next meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Trustee Kuzumano supports.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Kuzumano, to approve the agenda as amended. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Is there a motion? Move to approve?
Trustee Kuzumano supports.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Kuzumano, to approve the bill run. Motion passes unanimously. Item four is approval of the previous meeting's minutes from February 9th, 2022, and the special meeting's minutes from February 4th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the previous meeting minutes from February 9th and from February 4th. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move the consent agenda in its entirety, but we have public comments, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's why I revoked my motion for a moment.
Thank you for revoking. Okay. If anybody present wishes to speak, we are now on the public comment portion. Please approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. This is for agenda items only. Anyone participating remotely, if you wish to respeak, please digitally raise your hand and you will be called upon. I don't see anybody present. Roger, is anybody?
No one wishing to speak remotely.
Okay, moving on. Now you're up, Treasurer Gillette.
Move to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item nine. We are going to have a public hearing. This is a public hearing for the adoption of a resolution for the street lighting SAD for Moniker State's site condominiums, phase three. I am going to open the public hearing. The time is 6:34 PM. Anybody who wishes to speak on this public hearing may approach the microphone on the right or may digitally raise their hand. I do not see anyone. Roger, anybody? No?
No, sir.
No one wishes to speak, so I'm going to close this public hearing. The time is also 6:34 PM. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution for the SAD for Moniker States?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, we're going to do a roll. Roger, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Jollet?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzumano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion, or that resolution is adopted. All right, item 10 is tabled. Moving on to item 11. We have a request to approve the proposal submitted by Fishback to provide engineering services to develop a preliminary options for replacement of the meters and pressure reading valve in chamber MA-01, the amount of $39,950. Is there a motion?
So move.
Trustee?
Was that Charlie? Okay, Ms. Wanglin.
Thank you Supervisor Viviano and board members. Water and Sewers are furnished tonight requesting approval of the motion that was just made. This proposal comes to us tonight from Fishback. If you recall, this is the meter pit at 24 and Romeo Plank where that tragic accident took place roughly 26 years ago. This will be an effort, this will be a project that will take that meter pit up out of the ground, making it above-ground meter pit, make it more efficient. In the Fishback proposal, under the background paragraphs, it states several good reasons why we should do this. And the township has requested that Fishback conduct a study to evaluate site locations for a new meter pit, as well as a facility location or layout that will make the new meter pit more efficient, i.e. better pressure. And then also the project will give us a projected cost. We are recommending approval.
Thank you, Jerry. These engineering fees, as well as the entire estimated cost of the project at this point, that's all built into our CIP program at the moment?
Correct. Correct. These were, this project, as well as the next one, were part of the CIP plan that was approved roughly three, maybe four meetings ago.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Quick. So this meter pit, when it is completed, the goal is to have it, all the valves above ground, open doors, so we won't go into, we won't go below, we'll be at service level.
That's correct.
So if there's an incident?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the proposal submitted by Fishback for engineering services for the developed preliminary options for the replacement of the meter and pressure reading valve, the amount of $39,950. Members, please vote. A lot to read. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 12. We have a request to approve the proposal submitted by Fishback and AEW to provide engineering services. This time it's for the meter, to meter the township's sanitary sewer system and update the sanitary hydraulic model and permit tracking spreadsheets. The amount is $185,700.
So move.
Support.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Board. And as previously stated, this will be a request from Water and Sewer, as well as engineering, to update the sanitary sewer hydraulic model. This will be a joint effort between Fishback, as well as AEW, as well as Water and Sewer, with the help of, obviously, engineering. This request comes to you due to the continuous growth in the township. The current hydraulic model for the sanitary sewer system is outdated in relation to the sanitary flows that are being generated. We're in the process of getting a new master plan in place, which is going to change the flows of the township, more likely increase the flows of the township. This will help us identify, be better prepared, I should say, for the additional flows coming. As you can see on page two and three of the memo, there are quite a lengthy task, quite a few tasks here, that both engineering firms will accomplish, will work together on, as well as Water and Sewer and engineering. And this just is basically needed, and we are recommending we move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. You know how long ago the last time this was done?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? So five years ago. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the proposal submitted by Fishback and AEW to provide the engineering services to meter the township's sanitary sewer system and sanitary hydraulic model and permit tracking spreadsheet, amount of $185,000, eighty-five, I'm sorry, $185,700. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Jerry. Item 13 is a request to approve the promotion of employee 1754, Ken Delpra.
Mr. Chair, without objection, I move that we promote employee 1754 and also employee 1391. One motion. No objection.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say that.
Okay, so we're going to take on both promotions, Tom Dover, as well as Ken. Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board Members. I'm here to recommend a promotion in the Parks and Rec Department. The Board of Trustees authorized HR to initiate the recruitment process for the position of Lead Maintenance. This position was posted in compliance with the MAPC-BA agreement. There were two internal applicants for this position. These two candidates were interviewed by myself and Sal DeCarlo, and we are recommending Ken Delpra for the position. Ken is currently a maintenance worker and has seven years of employment with the township. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, and this is a budgeted position.
And the second one?
Second one. I'm here to recommend a promotion in the Water and Sewer Department. The Board of Trustees authorized HR to initiate the recruitment process for the position of Water and Sewer Inspector, due to a retirement. Also, this position was posted in compliance with the MAPC-BA agreement. There were three internal candidates. They were interviewed by myself, Jerry Wanglin, and Ed Coning, and we are recommending Tom Dover for this position. Tom is currently a lead utility worker and has 10 years of employment with the township. If approved, the promotion will go into effect immediately, and this is also a budgeted position.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the promotion of Ken Delpra and the promotion of Tom Dover. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to our employees. All right, moving on to item 15. We have a request to approve the cost proposal from Kyle Alwerman to rewrite the Macomb Township zoning ordinance.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Mr. Scudow, can you give us a little background on how we came to this proposal?
Yes, Supervisor. The current zoning ordinance was last fully adopted, and we, it looks like in the late 80s, early 90s. It's received a lot of updates since then. At this point, we're starting to see conflicts because of the number of updates that have been done incrementally over the years. What we are going to do is overhaul the whole ordinance from the bottom up. We feel like this is the most cost-effective way of doing it. Eliminates a lot of future conflicts. We can also bring up the date, the latest case law, Supreme Court law, and, you know, some of the issues that new businesses, residents are facing.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Scudow, or any discussion?
Well needed.
Yeah, so just for the sake of the public, this is something that came up during the working session, that we discussed in a little bit more detail, so most of the board members are well-versed on the issue. Okay, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the cost proposal from Kyle Alwerman to rewrite the Macomb Township zoning ordinance. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 16, request to approve the extension of time for the preliminary site plan, Macomb Town Center, Phase 2, 3, 4, and 5, which is permanent parcel ID 0809300017, and this would be located at the north side of 24, east of Romeo Plank in Section 9. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Scudow?
Josh is on.
Satan?
Mr. Box is on the...
Oh, is he on?
Yep.
Go ahead, Josh. I forgot that you were logging in remotely there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, so the planning department is seeking an extension of time for this application. This site is in Section 9, the Town Center area. Phase 1 is largely complete. They did have an approved preliminary plan, approved in January of 2021, that was good for one year. They are seeking a one-year extension for that plan. I believe phases 2 and 3 are already in for engineering. I think Mr. Van Tiflin can confirm that, but they are seeking a one-year extension, and this did go to the Town Center Committee, and it was supported with unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. A motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the extension of time for the preliminary site plan for Macomb Town Center, Phases 2, 3, 4, and 5, parcel ID 0809300017. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 17 is a request to approve the preliminary plan for the Stone Ridge Site Condos, permanent parcel ID 0825475009, and parcel ID 0825475010, which is the east side of Fairchild, approximately 1,500 feet north of 21 Mile Road, Section 25.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. ... It is a plan seeking approval for Stone Ridge. This is a site condominium north of 21 Mile, just east of Fairchild. It is expected to have 103 single-family units. It did go before the Planning Commission at its last meeting and was recommended for approval by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? A motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the preliminary plan for Stone Ridge Site Condos, permanent parcel IDs 082547509 and 0827, 0825475010. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 18 is a request to purchase new weight room equipment for the Rec Center from Direct Fitness Solutions, the amount of $13,495.
So move.
So forward.
Mr. Caro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Parks and Recreation Department is requesting to purchase weight machines and equipment for the fitness center inside the Rec Center. Our current weight machines are preferred product is from Precor. These items are sole-source products. Direct Fitness Solution is the authorized vendor of Precor equipment in the state. We're recommending that we purchase six pieces of equipment from Direct Fitness Solutions for a total price of $13,495. I've included the quote, the equipment being purchased, as well as a confirmation process memo from the purchasing specialist. This is a budgeted item, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Any questions or discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Kuzumano, to approve the purchase of new weight room equipment for the Rec Center from Direct Fitness Solutions, in the amount of $13,495. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Item 19 is a request to approve the Office 365 Migration Project, to be done by IT right, in the amount of $53,126.48. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver. So this is a project, this is part of our IT capital improvement budget for this year. Initial estimates were actually in the $80,000 range, between 70 and 80. The actual quote came in at 53,000, so it's a little bit under our projected costs. This will actually make us more secure and eliminates a physical server in the basement. We're moving everything to the cloud. Any questions? No. Okay. A motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the Office 365 Migration, the amount of $53,126.48. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to authorize the supervisor to list parcel ID number 20081040025 with our broker, Pilot Properties. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
So as we discussed in our working session, this is the former Whitney Park, future Whitney Park property, we refer to the Foss Road property, 24 and Foss. The Board basically came to the conclusion that we don't see any future public use for this property, so we're going to put it on the market and see what we can get for it. Of course, the offers will come back to the Board for approval. It was contemplated in some early discussions with our broker that it might be advantageous from a pure value-wise to split this property. There's a few small fingers of it that might make for better individual lots coming off the main roads. So I guess I would ask that we amend the motion to authorize me to approve any splits in the process of retrieving offers.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to amend the motion to authorize the supervisor to execute any splits that may be appropriate to enhance the value of the property during the sale.
I'll support it.
Any questions?
When do you, just a quick question, when do you think they'd put it up for sale?
I think there's some stuff internally, we still want to make sure that we have correct before we put it out to general market. We've already talked to the brokers about it. There's some stuff that Jim and Josh are going to organize so that we have the right information to give to any potential buyers. But I would say within, I don't know when they're going to list it, but I say we'll be ready in another week or so.
Yeah. Yeah.
So then, so then we wouldn't, we would sell, we would try to sell it as a whole unit first?
Yeah, I'm going to let the broker guide us. That's what we pay them for. We're going to break down the options for that property. That's what we're going to do internally, of what we think could go there and where he could direct his marketing efforts. And, you know, if he tells us that, hey, if you split off these two little pieces and sell them as one-acre lots off of 20, you know, 24 Mile Road, those will bring in a better dollar, and we'll sell the rest of it. However, he thinks we're going to get the biggest return.
Okay.
And we'll go from there.
Good.
Again, any one of those offers, they all come back to the Board for approval, so...
Correct. That was my question, Mr. Chairman. So it's possible that we'd be making multiple votes on different dates?
It is, it is potential. If the decision is made to split it to enhance value, we could, we could sell two or three pieces of this and have individual votes for each sale.
Thank you.
Just for further clarification, if we're looking at the property, there's a big piece of property, and then these little fingers that stick out and connect to the main road, that those fingers would line up with the adjacent homes that already exist. It might be easier to sell those fingers individually, instead of the big block, instead of part of the big block. That wasn't really great, was it?
I understood what you meant.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to authorize the supervisor to list parcel ID 20081040025 with Pilot Properties and to execute any property splits that may enhance its value. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 21 is a request to adopt a resolution to waive permit fees for Macomb Township for construction projects on or about township-owned buildings and properties. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
So this is a resolution that I initiated. I have learned since we are about to undertake the basement renovation, a park construction, and possibly the relocation of Old Town Hall to this facility, and going to be doing a number of projects this year, that in the past, Township Board had to vote on waiving internal permit fees. It seems to me that it's a bit of a waste of time and energy for us to pay ourselves, and so I'm proposing this motion that will just automatically waive those fees. We still submit for permits, we still get inspections for ourselves, we still do all the work, but I don't see it necessary to play a shell game with our funds. So I'll take any questions from the Board.
I just got one. Is this for specific jobs, or is this going to...
All of them.
All of them.
If it's a township project, if it's, again, township-owned project, it's something we're doing internally, we'd only be paying ourselves.
Yeah.
It's all, it's not even like it's an enterprise.
I get the idea.
It's not even like it's an enterprise fund, it's a general fund. So we're just moving money from one budget to a different budget. I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
No, I see what you're saying, but is this, we're making this rule forever now?
Forever.
Okay.
Unless somebody else wants to undo it.
No, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for General Counsel through the Chair. Consistent with the ruling in Assorti's case regarding binding future boards, what's your opinion regarding our ability to bind future boards with this resolution, with the ends in mind of this agenda item?
Well, contrary to the Assorti matter, where you had a contractual issue at play, this is merely a legislative function of this body. It's no different than passing a resolution or an ordinance that carries forward to board to board unless they wish to change it in the future.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzumano. So if there's no more questions? A motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to adopt the resolution to waive permit fees for Macomb Township on construction projects on or about township-owned buildings and properties. Roger, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Jollet?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzumano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. The resolution is adopted. Okay, moving on to item 22. We have a request to authorize the supervisor to execute in the dedication of the Garfield Right-Away Agreement with St. Peter's Lutheran Church for parcel ID 200808-300027.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Like the motion states, this is one of the rightaways that we have yet to acquire to complete the Garfield reconstruction. We've worked out an agreement with St. Peter's to finally get that right away from them, and that's what we're seeking for tonight.
Just for clarification, they're providing that right away, is that correct?
Yes, yes. We already have it for most of the other parcels along that stretch. We still have some other ones to acquire on the different one-mile segments, but I don't think there's any one, anything else. I think that's the last one on that one mile, correct, Jim?
There's one that's associated with the development. They have the paperwork, they just haven't returned it to us yet, but we expect it shortly.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. It may seem a little silly. Would there be any reason not to approve such a request?
I can't think of one.
Does anyone who is an employee of the township have any reason, or an instance where the Board has denied a request for authorization for the supervisor to execute such a dedication agreement?
No, we, the township initiated this project a number of years ago, and so we've been successful in acquiring some of the rightaway. Like the supervisor said, there are still some others that are hanging out here, this one being one of those parts. some others that are hanging out here, this one being one of those parcels.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzma. If there's no more questions, a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to authorize the supervisor to execute the dedication of Garfield Right-of-Way Agreement with St. Peter's Lutheran Church. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to our last item of the evening, this is for awarding the community, the twenty-twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Public Service Fund, and to approve the brick and mortar applications.
Trustee Kuzma will make the motion?
And, Mr. Kuzma, would that be the motion to award carehouse two-thousand five hundred dollars, wigs for kids six hundred dollars, interfaith volunteer caregivers five hundred dollars, and Macomb Township Senior Center twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars, and authorize the brick and mortar applications for ADA ramps and senior center renovations?
Exactly.
I would like to second that motion by Mr. Kuzma.
Perfect.
Get it all read in. All right, is there, so I guess as stated, we've kept a consistent amount of money to send over to the senior center, so we can continue our programs there. We've also awarded, in similar amounts to last year, amounts to carehouse wigs for kids and interfaith caregivers. So, and we are also applying for two brick and mortar grants, one of them is for ADA sidewalks, in some of the areas of the township that need replacement, and the other one is for senior center renovations. So, well, hopefully, hopefully those grant monies will come through. Any questions? No discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Kuzma, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to award the twenty-twenty-two Community Block Grant Service Funds, and to authorize the brick and mortar applications for the ADA ramps and senior center renovations. Roger, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to public comment again, so we are back to public comment, this is for non-agenda items. If anyone wishes to speak, they might place the microphone on the right-hand side of the room, or if you wish to participate digitally, you can raise your hand and you'll be called upon. I don't see anybody present making a move, Roger?
No one remotely, sir.
Nobody remotely, okay, so we're gonna move on to Board comments.
I'll start.
Go ahead.
I would just like to congratulate the two individuals who were promoted from within, I think that's good news for the Township and for them. And also, I'm, I was very happy to see the block grants awarded to Carehouse and, and Wigs for Kids and Caregivers, those are very worthwhile organizations, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Same as Nancy, I'd just like to thank the employees that did step up and apply for them jobs, and congratulate them. Also, thank the Board for working with the grants and the money that was spent. The other thing I wanna comment about is that I'm very happy Water and Sewer's on the look or the job of getting that, an above-meter pit, that's, I was around twenty-six years ago, and it's well-deserved right now, so thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Kuzma?
I have no comments for this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzma. Treasurer Gillette?
I will echo the no comments of my previous speaker, but also echo the comments of the previous, previous speakers.
That's a comment.
No comment.
You know what, I don't have anything tonight either, so with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Any discussion? A motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to adjourn the meeting. Members please vote. As soon as the little box pops up?
He's having a hard time keeping up with us.
I know, we were smoking tonight.
Well, hold on, I just bumped, it was right on no when I bumped it. Was that a problem?
You don't wanna adjourn the meeting, that's okay.
Okay, there it is.
You get lonely.
All right.
That motion passes unanimously, this meeting is adjourned.